Okay. All right, for those that are joining us from home, this is a work session of the Pecosin City Council, and we're here to talk tonight about, with our financial advisors. I wanted to go ahead and come on the air and start to let everybody know that, yes, we are sitting here, but our financial advisors are caught in traffic. We're just gonna sit here and wait until they show up, and that's acceptable to us. They also push back the start of the regular session, but we'll stay on air from this point forward, and we will mute, but just to let everybody know that we're here, and if you were interested in listening, we'll be right back. Thanks. Kyle, are we good? Okay. Again, welcome to everybody that's joined us from home. Like I said, we started the meeting, our financial advisors were held up in traffic as we suspected, so we're here. Tonight's an important issue for the city. We're talking about, obviously, something that's always near and dear to us, which is debt capacity, trying to work in tandem with the school board here, so we've asked our financial advisors to look at our city positions and give us a briefing on that tonight. Not moving at a rapid pace, but making calculated steps moving forward to come through this, come through the decision by the school board on school sizes, and then put the two boards back together. So, we do also have one other anomaly tonight, and that is that, and this is actually a good thing, Councilwoman Andrews is away on personal business, and that is the birth of a granddaughter. So, we are going to, if and when she calls in, allow her to participate via telecon. That's in accordance with our policy on electronics, and she's all the way in Utah, I believe. Is that the right? I believe. So, some time zones we're working across, but as always, Kyle, we appreciate you being here.
Happy to be here.
The fact that y'all have driven down from Richmond, and you've helped us for many years, took a brief look at what you've got here, looking forward to your presentation. Randy, have you got anything else?
Mr. Mayor, as you'll recall, the purpose of this work session is to talk about the city's credit debt capacity. Think about it as your personal credit card. What's current balance? What's the max on your credit card? At what point do you begin to impact your credit rating? And then, what does it cost to pay back the money that you would put on the card? And if you think about it in that framework, as Kyle goes through it, you'll see, this is our debt load, this is what we could go up to and stay within our guidelines, this is the impact on sort of how we compare with other AAA localities, and if you were to do that, this is what it would cost, because that minimum payment on that credit card would go up, and it's all contained. And one last thing, you had asked for this work session, and really, two parts of a work session. This is part one. At our next meeting, we'll have a discussion of the balance of the current recommended capital improvements plan. What are in years two, three, four, and five of that plan? Because in thinking about how much debt the council may wish to take on, it's important to understand all of the other things that potentially compete for that. Again, we're not rushing to spend up to the limit on our community credit card, but it is important that we understand other school issues, parks and rec issues, police and fire issues, all of the other issues that we have, the public works equipment issues. So, that will come at our next meeting, and with those two things in together, I think you'll be in a good position to meet with the school board, hopefully no later than December, if not before.
Okay. Very well. How do you measure?
Well, Mr. Mayor and members of council, nice to see everybody. A couple of new faces, so nice to meet you and see you for the first time. Obviously, to the familiar faces, good to see y'all. I haven't seen you in a while. So, again, with the mayor and with the city manager's lead-in, who has to do such a good job of framing things for us, we've got a booklet that we'll walk through. My colleague Griffin over here will kind of flip through the slides up on the screen for the audience, but we're happy to take questions as we go through this, have this be conversational and hopefully informative for y'all. Again, hopefully being at the early part of the process, there's no decisions or need to be made tonight, just simply information and kind of getting everybody's brain thinking about what can and could be done within the framework of what's responsible and reasonable. So, with that, we'll start on page number one. And just a little bit of background, we'll do a little bit of background just on us, won't take very long, but just don't want to presuppose that some of the new faces know exactly who we are. So, as Mayor and Manager mentioned, I'm out of Richmond, Davenport Company. We've been the city's financial advisor for as long as I can remember, and that's 15 years. Theoretically, I can remember longer than that, that's as long as I've worked with Pecosin. And what that really means is, we've helped the city over the years think about and plan for capital, meaning when we need to go pay for, whether it's big or small, capital projects, schools, infrastructure, we over the years have helped the city think about that, and how that's done, when it's done, and making sure that we're within the range of what's reasonable and responsible. And we've got some great sort of built-up results in our credit ratings that we'll talk about, that speak to some of the successes there. We are constantly looking at the debt portfolio. As Randy mentioned, your outstanding credit card right now, to see if there are indeed opportunities to refinance for savings purposes. We've taken a lot of advantage of that the last couple of years, which is the good news. The other side is, there's probably nothing to do right now, per se, but that's really because we've done so much over that refinancing over the last couple of years. And lastly, we did a lot of work with the rating agencies. We'll talk a little bit more about that in the next couple of pages. So, if we go over to page two, our goals and objectives in terms of what we're hoping to cover tonight, and again, hopefully this is helpful for you all, is A, to give you a little bit of sense of who we are, won't spend much time there. B, and really getting to the meat of things, give you a history of the city's credit ratings. And so, both with the mayor and the manager, and others of you who have known over the history and the course of things with Pecosin, your credit ratings have been upgraded four out of the last five years. So, you're really in a good spot right now to be thinking and planning for the next phase of things, and we'll talk more about that in a couple of pages. C, we're gonna talk a little bit about fund balance trends, which you might pause and say, all right, what does that necessarily have to do with borrowing for new capital projects? And we'll explain why it is, we talk about that, because it is very critical and very important when we think about doing new projects. And so, we'll talk more about that. And then, as we get into D and E and F, we'll start thinking again, as Randy alluded to, what's on our credit card right now, maybe our mortgage payment? And then, how do we think about our ability to do future projects coming down the pike, whether it's schools or otherwise? Again, all with the goal of being in sort of a big-picture mode here, whereby things can be refined, they can be tweaked, but wanting to give you a sense of where you are. So, with that, I'll jump over to page four. I'm gonna go very quickly over these pages. But I think a couple of critical points in terms of who we are, we've worked with you for a long time, and so we thank you for that, and appreciate the partnership there. A couple of important things, as we talk about capital projects, whether it's schools, public safety, whatever it is, doesn't make any difference to us what those projects are. We're not here to tell you that it should be this project, or that project, or the project should cost this much or that much. That's not our job, per se. Our job is really to help you think about, as you're making those policy decisions, about which capital projects you want to get done, helping to fold those into your finances, and make sure that you've got sort of credit rating-wise and financial stability, regardless of what the actual project is. So, I point that out as maybe a disclaimer of sorts, doesn't matter to us what the particular project is. Another important point, we don't provide the financing. So, when we get to the point of talking about, you may go finance or borrow money for X, Y, or Z, that's not us that provides that financing. That's an important point, because that means we are agnostic as to where it comes from. In Virginia, we're blessed with all kinds of different ways to finance capital projects for local governments. There's nice state programs, a variety of different ways you can do it on your own, doesn't make any difference to us where that funding comes from, and so I think that's an important sort of disclaimer at the outset. On page five, again, two minutes, we're located in Richmond, company founded in 1863, been around for a long time, and work primarily in sort of the mid-Atlantic region, although we've got a larger footprint than that. In our public finance area, if you go to page six, Griffin, just a snapshot of the places we work, we know Virginia, it's our home state, it's what we do probably more than anything else. So, whether it's cities, counties, et cetera, we've seen about everything. And I should also note that both Griffin and I are part of a larger team, so you all who have been on council, used to seeing David with me, David's still very much around in the fold, so that's sort of the team that's worked with Pecosin for those years. Okay, so that's the introduction, so to speak, who we are. Now, we'll start getting to the meat of things on page eight. So, as you get to page eight, this is your historical city credit rating. So, Pecosin over the years has done a very nice job of managing its credit profile, especially since the city manager's been here, to be frank. So, what we've shown here is a history, really, of where Pecosin started from a credit rating standpoint, back in the sort of orange circles there, where we came out initially, and this at this point is going back seven or so years, was right in the A range. And so, from a credit rating standpoint, there's really two primary rating agencies based in New York, they rate folks all over the country, local governments, and otherwise. And those two primary agencies are Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's. So, we've got a credit rating for both Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's, and if you go back seven or so years, our initial credit ratings, which was the first time that Pecosin got their own standalone credit ratings in the modern era, were in the A range. And those at the time were very solid, very comfortable, investment-grade, and something everybody felt good about at the time. Now, what you see as you kind of look at that chart, we started with the yellow, then we moved up to the blue, and so those were moving into the sort of lower AA range, which at that point, you're getting to the very top tier of the credit quality spectrum from these rating agencies. And then, if you go even further, you see the green, which is where we are right now, we have from Moody's a AA2 credit rating, and from S&amp;P, a AAA credit rating. Now, that AAA credit rating is the highest possible credit rating on any of the rating agency's scale, so that really puts you in rare air in terms of local governments. It's even more special, per se, for Pecosin, because a lot of the AAA's, which we have a lot in Virginia, most are much larger than you. So, you've got the Fairfax's, you've got the Henrico's. Around here, you've got the Virginia Beaches that are AAA, much larger than Pecosin. What Pecosin's been able to do is manage between the finances, which are directly within your control, and the demographics, that are very positive here, not necessarily directly within your control, but benefit you, and get that S&amp;P rating to the AAA level, and Moody's at AA2, whereby we got an upgrade last year. So, we really, from a starting point, as we talk about thinking the next couple of years, thinking about where we go from here, you start in a really strong financial position. So, the goal of what all we're gonna talk about is to make sure we keep that strong financial position going forward. So, as you go to page nine, we've put in here just a kind of a snippet, both from Moody's and S&amp;P, of their last sort of commentary, and the things that they were saying right out of the report when they provided our updated credit ratings last year. And Moody's last year upgraded us to a AA2. And you see some of the things that they say there, and some of the things they care about. Strengths, they note, above-average resident wealth levels, so the economic/demographic sort of picture of your local government is about 30% of the overall credit rating. So, that's important, clearly. It's one of the biggest slices of the pie in terms of credit rating, something that you are very strong on, things like per capita income, unemployment rate, assessed value per capita, those things you look really good on, not necessarily within your day-to-day control, but definitely a big positive in sort of supporting the rating from that standpoint. So, we talked about that. But the next two bullet points there really speak to the day-to-day and year-to-year management, and that is healthy reserves and conservative management supported by fiscal policies. So, as I mentioned at the outset, even when we're talking about capital planning and borrowing money and things of that nature, one of the first things we always like to go back and focus on is, what are our fund balances, what are our reserve levels? If there's one thing that a rating agency analyst goes and looks at, and really any lender, when they're evaluating the credit-worthiness of a local government like Pecosin, to what kind of reserves and what kind of fund balance do you have? So, that's why we'll talk about that before we even get into any future planning in terms of capital planning. The other important piece of that is the financial policies, and making sure that as a body and as an organization, that you're sticking to the plan, so to speak, and thinking multi-year in terms of what your reserve levels look like, how much debt you take on, et cetera. So, it's all gonna be sort of incorporated within the booklet we'll talk about, and things that Pecosin has done well over the last, you know, sort of recent history. Challenges there, they note an above-average debt burden. Interestingly, the debt side of the equation for the credit rating agencies is a pretty small percentage of their overall sort of pie. That equals about 10 to 20% at most of their sort of assessment of a local government's credit rating. So, it's something we watch very carefully. We'll talk about policy-wise in here, but it really, from a rating standpoint, plays a smaller role in a lot of respects than fund balance does, and certainly the economy does. So, I'd point that out, and certainly we'll keep a watch on that. Things that could lead to an upgrade, and then we'll move on here. Moody's wants to see tax-based growth, tax-based growth enhancement of socioeconomic indicators, significant increases in reserves and liquidity. So, again, thinking about fund balance reserve side of things, critical to the underlying credit rating.
Can you give me a very quick definition of socioeconomic indicators?
Sure. It's things like per capita income, unemployment rate, median household income, so like those income levels, unemployment rates are a big piece of that, and then they also care about things like assessed value per capita. So, how big is your tax base, which is your primary revenue source for most local governments relative to your overall population? So, those are the things they care about. So, if you flip the page to page number 10, take a minute or two, we'll talk about S&amp;P's As we talk about the rating agencies, they each kind of have their own little different flavor of how they come up with the ratings, they have their own commentary, their own sort of specific words they use, but I think you'll see some similar themes between Moody's on the prior page and S&amp;P on this page. So, Moody's notes a very strong economy, access to broad and diverse metropolitan cities, it's hilarious. So, again, that's that socioeconomic demographic stuff that we benefit from by virtue of being Pecosin. Second, they note very strong management, strong financial policies and practices. So, again, that's things like, we've got financial policies, we follow them, annually we have structurally balanced budgets, we are generating, generally speaking, surpluses to break even each year versus having structural imbalances or anything like that, which you've not had historically. Third bullet point there, adequate budget performance, light operating deficit in the general fund. But if you flip to the next bullet, then, very strong budgetary flexibility with an available fund balance of 23% of operating expenditures. So, again, what they're really saying there is, you run a tight ship annually in terms of revenues versus expenditures, and you've got a solid fund balance, and those things are sort of critical underpinning of that credit rating. So, again, that's where we are credit rating-wise, and as we sit down with the city manager, with the finance staff, and start thinking about this planning, I think it goes without saying that the goal is to make sure we sort of do no harm to that credit standing, and in fact, maybe keep us in a position to keep enhancing that going forward. So, with that, we'll flip over to page number 12. And on page 12, before we get too deep into the sort of details of the numbers and what might be done, and different ways to look at it, something we like to do, the rating agencies will do it on their end, and I think most folks find it useful, is to give ourselves a comparison of where we and Pecosin stack up relative to neighbors, and relative to other local governments across the country that have the same credit rating as us. Ultimately, when a rating agency goes and takes your local government and does their credit rating, one of the things they're doing is they're comparing a variety of these key statistics and metrics across the country, as well as to neighbors in your sort of immediately surrounding area. So, it's an important exercise for that purpose, and I think most people find it useful and helpful to kind of give yourself a barometer of where you stack up relative to others. So, what we've done here is pulled together a peer comparative. You can see the top there, we've got Pecosin, a year 12,000 roughly speaking population, and a AA2 and a AAA. What we've tried to do here is pull other cities in Virginia that are of a relatively speaking smaller size, and certainly the highest credit quality. And you can see what that looks like down the line there, anywhere from a Charlottesville and a Fairfax, down to a Winchester, all of whom have very high credit ratings, the majority of whom are larger than you, and so that's a help to them from a credit standpoint, but it sort of serves to further the point that you're doing other things very, very well, that help offset the fact that we've got a little bit smaller size than other So, we've thrown a little smattering of that in here, just to give you a sense of things. On page 13, you see where they are. Again, Virginia's, generally speaking, Virginia is blessed in the credit markets, as the rating agencies, the credit markets really view the state pretty favorably. It's generally viewed as a good government state, and you all are at the top of the heap in terms of credit ratings, even amongst those other good government state and local Okay, so if we go over to page 14, now we'll start to talk about Pecosin specifically. And you'll see in the next couple of pages why we introduced that peer group, but what page 14 is showing is our general fund balance over the last five years. And what you see in the left-hand is just the sheer dollars, the darker green bar there is your unassigned fund balance, maybe a little hard to see on the screen, but it's where the bottom darker bar. And that is the probably most important portion of your fund balance from a rating agency standpoint. It's where your policy is, meaning you have a policy that speaks specifically to what that unassigned fund balance will be. The lighter green there is what we call other available fund balance. We won't get into all the accounting side of that, but basically it means other dollars that are really spoken for, but are important when a rating agency is looking at the overall credit quality, because we're really looking at the total picture in terms of your reserves as opposed to one isolated piece of it. So, what you then see, if you look at the right-hand side, is your unassigned fund balance relative to your overall expenditures. And so, this is really what your policy speaks to. I'm sure you're used to hearing both from us, city manager and the finance staff, especially during budget season, look, we've got this 12 to 15% range, and that is sort of the absolute do-not-touch limit in terms of the unassigned fund balance. And so, what the right-hand side is showing us is that on a percentage basis, we've been very steady in the, we'll call it around 20% range, it's above that policy. We did dip down in 2016 as part of really the multi-year plan that we talked to the rating agencies about last year. But I think it's important to point and sort of note, as we think and talk and plan for what may be next, to just make sure we put a marker out there, sort of our job as a fiduciary to you, that that fund balance and making sure we've got a really solid level is gonna be important as we think about doing new capital projects that'll be of a bigger size for Pecosin. We'll talk through the next couple of pages, what doing, you know, in the $20 million range could look like in terms of new projects, which would be a big project for Pecosin, that's a good size. We'll talk through kind of how we got to that number. But then, one important point, before we leave the fund balance topic, is one way to counterbalance, and really a critical way to counterbalance, sort of going out for what might be generational, once-in-a-generation types of projects, is to make sure you've got a good cushion and a good reserve on the fund balance side of things. So, with that, I'll shut up for a couple of minutes on fund balance, but it's an important point, and one that really underscores everything the rating agencies are doing. So, you flip the page to page 15, we'll go back to this concept of a comparative. What page 15 is doing is really looking across that comparative spectrum at simply the number of dollars we have in our unassigned fund balance relative to the peer group. Now, Pecosin's down in the light green down at the bottom there, the darker green bars are at the top, those are the other folks in Virginia. The gold bars are really national medians that we've pulled from a Moody's database, we can kind of see what We can kind of see what Moody's per se is looking at as they're comparing us to the nation. And so if you look at this graph unto itself, we look to be a little bit on the low side relative to the peer group. Now, that's not necessarily a negative or concern because we're much smaller than most of these places. So the more appropriate, probably more usable apples-to-apples comparison is on page 16. And on page 16, we're looking at the unassigned fund balance as a percent of our budget. So again, that's where your policy is, and this is the most direct sort of apples-to-apples comparison of where you and Pecosin sit relative to both this local, what we'll call local peer group in Virginia, as well as the national median. So you look at that, and you can see that from a Virginia standpoint, you're really kind of right in there, sort of right at the peer median. If we're in around 17, 18%, the peer median in Virginia is maybe a percent higher than that, or magnitude-wise, we're right there. You do see that on a national level, the percentages are much higher. That has a lot to do with schools in Virginia. So in a lot of those states, schools have their own separate independent elected body that has their own taxing power. In Virginia, we lump schools and the general government altogether because ultimately schools don't have any taxing power per se, so the funding mechanism of last resort really is the city government. And so you see that reflected in some of the ratios whereby we may look a little smaller in fund balance and a little higher on debt relative to the nation, and that really has to do with schools and the fact that gets sort of roped in with us in the general city in Virginia, whereas in most of the rest of the country, that's a separate entity unto itself. Being able to see where we are right now, basically in line with the Virginia average, right in there order magnitude-wise, so we're in good shape. So with that as a precursor on the fund balance side of things, we'll shift gears a little bit now and start thinking about, again, how do we plan for and think about the future in terms of funding new capital projects? The way we start that, just as the city manager mentioned in his opening remarks, is to first take a look at what's outstanding on our credit card, or what's outstanding in our home mortgage right now, and how do we understand that and think about that before we start thinking about something that's new. So what's on page 18 is what we call the tax-supported debt profile. That's an important concept, because what we mean by tax-supported is truly the debt that is supported entirely by the tax revenues of the city. That's separate than the relatively small amount of debt that we have outstanding on the sewer fund that is paid for entirely by sewer enterprise revenues. There was a time in the past when some of the utility funds or enterprise funds were not necessarily self-supporting, which means that they weren't paying for themselves. That's important because that means that that debt gets sort of lumped in with our tax-supported debt when the rating agencies are looking at and calculating our various debt ratios. So page 18, again, we're talking about the tax-supported side of things, which because we have self-supporting enterprise funds, is really the general city and school debt that we have outstanding right now. So we have, if you're looking at the table at the bottom right, about $24 million in principal outstanding. That's that 23,919 number down there is paid off very rapidly. So if you take your eye to the far right-hand side of that table, you see that 10-year payout ratio. Anything above 50% in that 10-year payout ratio is viewed solidly. 60% is really pretty good. We're literally at 100% within a couple of years in terms of 10-year payout ratio. So what that means is basically, within a couple of years, we will have paid off all of the outstanding principal balance on our tax-supported loans. So that is a really nice position to be in if we're thinking about, all right, we've got other projects we have to do, how is it we fold those in? What that payout ratio being so high right now gives us the ability to do is fold in new capital projects while at the same time making sure they're paid off in a responsible manner, so you're not leaving things to the next generation, so to speak. So again, your total payments, you see what those are, roughly level. There's a little bit of an increase there in FY '19 tied to some land purchase multiple years ago. Generally speaking, though, we have pretty level debt payments for what is the next seven, eight years. So that's kind of where we start, that's where we start kind of thinking and layering in terms of new capital projects. I should also note that all of the city's outstanding debt is fixed rate. So as you think about, maybe watch the news, maybe see that interest rates are going up a little bit, city's in a good position whereby all their debt is fixed rate. So if we just sort of all went to sleep tomorrow for the next 15 years, those debt payments are going to be what they are if indeed you don't do anything with them going forward. That's probably not realistic, but it's a better position to be in than thinking about, oh, we've got variable rate or something of that nature. That's not the situation here. You've got fixed-rate loans in the books, and so that's a nice positive. So as you flip over to page 20, we'll talk about your current financial policy guidelines. These guidelines you've had in place for a number of years. They really serve as an underpinning for the management portion of a credit rating, and that's a big piece of their pie, so to speak, in terms of rating agencies. And they really serve as a barometer for all of us collectively to think about what is reasonable and responsible to do in the future. And so from the debt side of things, we really have three critical ones. One is debt service to expenditures, and that is basically a measurement of how many dollars out of the budget annually are going to make debt service payments. So for every dollar we spend, how many cents are going towards debt service? And our policy speaks to that level not exceeding 10%. So for every dollar you spend, your policy says that not more than 10% of that should be going towards debt service, and you're in compliance with that and will continue to be as we do the planning here. The second ratio is debt to assessed value. The assessed value and the tax base being the primary revenue source for most local governments, the credit markets like to look at, what is the overall sort of size of the tax-supported debt load relative to the size of your tax base? And so you've got a 3% level. We'll show you graphically what that looks like in a couple of pages. I think that'll help you sort of visualize and think about this. And lastly, that 10-year payout ratio we talked about on the page before, which really is a measure of how quickly do we pay our debt off, making sure that we're not leaving things to the next generation, but also making sure we're not sort of overburdening the current generation. So that's the balancing act that we'll do as we talk about the future. Okay, so as you go to page 21, we're first going to show you what your policy looked like before we layer anything new in, just to give you a visual sense of where we start. First slide here is debt to assessed value, and if you're sort of a visual person, like I tend to be, on the left-hand side, you see that graph there. The red line is there on purpose, we don't want to go above the red line. The green bars are the debt we have on the books right now. And so basically, as we think about our planning going forward, we want to make sure that those bars going forward don't go above that red line in terms of debt to assessed value. We've got a 3% policy, we're at about half that right now, and so we've got some good capacity relative to that ratio to be layering on new projects. On page 22, this ratio, which is debt service to expenditures, is arguably probably the most important of these various ratios, because this again is speaking to how many dollars, how many cents out of every dollar are going towards debt service. And so this is the ratio that, as we do our planning, will be the constraining factor, so to speak. We've got a 10% ratio level, meaning policy limit, we don't want to go above that. We're right now a little bit below 8%, so we've got about 2% to kind of work with, and then it trends down going forward. So we'll quantify that for you in the next section, let you understand what is possible to be fit within that going forward. So next, we'll take you over to page 24. I think this is really going to get towards what is it we can do? What we tend to think about when we think about planning like this are two big concepts, and I've kind of alluded to them in my remarks as we've been talking here. One is debt affordability. And debt affordability is really when the rubber meets the road, where the dollar's going to come from out of the budget to pay for this debt service or loan payments, whatever term you want to use. That's the first critical point we're going to talk about. We've got a certain way of thinking about that, and it's something you've seen before, but we'll walk through it. The second concept at the bottom of the page is debt capacity. And debt capacity is really how much can we do and still keep within our financial policies, and still keep within the levels that the rating agencies are going to be viewed as being responsible? So maybe a little more amorphous per se than debt affordability, but it's still very important because it speaks to, gets back to the credit rating agencies, what they think about our various debt levels, and it's how they compare us apples-to-apples when you come up with their credit rating. So those are the two concepts. We'll talk about affordability, simply where the dollar's going to come from out of the budget to pay for this stuff. The second one, capacity, how much can we do and still be within a compliant level from a rating agency standpoint? So as we go over to page 25, to, I think, start our discussion today, which really from our standpoint is, I think, how we see this as the beginning of a discussion, is we've taken two different ways of looking at the future. We first picked $23 million as the amount of new projects that are done over the next five years. That's not set stone by any means, that's not us coming up with some special number. It really is meant to be sort of a benchmark to start sort of our thinking and discussions from, with the caveat that, as you'll see, it really is about the amount you can do and still maintain compliance with those financial policies with a little bit of cushion in there. So we're not sort of taking it all the way up to the limit, but as we think about a capacity, it's really in that $23 million range, plus or minus, that we'd be thinking about over the next five years. So we've showed that in two ways, which maybe is overly simplistic, but we knew we only had so much time. The first is to say, all right, if we went out and we just borrowed $23 million in FY ' '19, meaning your next fiscal year, and we just jumped straight into permanent financing, what would that look like on our affordability and our capacity? That's one way of looking at it. I think as we think about things, the reality is it's very rare that, as you're thinking about bigger capital projects with schools or public safety, you're going to need all that money upfront. And so the second option, sort of case, I don't want to call it an option per se, but the second case we ran is what if we did something, maybe a little bit of interim financing whereby we borrow the dollars more on a just-in-time basis? Construction projects take, whatever it is, 12, 18, 36 months, and so instead of borrowing all those dollars upfront and having them just sit there, borrowing them on a little bit more of an as-needed basis. So the idea here is to kind of show you some barbells. If we did it all at once, what would it look like? If we did it in some smaller pieces, what would it look like? And all this can be amended and sort of massaged as you work through your process with the schools and your CIP. From an interest rate perspective, interest rates are very low right now. We've really used pretty close to current market rates with a little bit of cushion in there. Time will tell where those rates go, we don't know any better than anybody else does, but we've tried to be pretty close to where we are in terms of current market with a little bit of conservatism built in, not to say that we have any particular sense of exactly where they're going to go, because we don't. So if you go to page 26, some of these key assumptions we used to build into this analysis. We'll talk about the tax impact analysis, or that first bullet point, top of the page, the penny impact. We talk about debt affordability. We typically like to tie it back to, if we need to come up with dollars over and above what's in the budget right now to pay debt service, tie it back to what that means in the real estate tax rate. Doesn't mean that we're suggesting or saying you need to go raise the real estate tax rate, it just tends to be a metric that everyone can kind of get their head around when we think about, all right, we may need to come up with some new dollars in the budget, what does that really mean? So that's why we equate it to that. Again, it's something that most folks can sort of get their head around as we're thinking about multi-years and budgets. So one penny on your real estate tax rate generates about $150,000, $156,000 to be more exact. We haven't assumed that grows at all, so I think in Pecosin, you feel pretty good, at least from what we understand about the economy, where things are headed. We purposely have not factored any of that likely good news in the future into the analysis, trying to err a little bit on the conservative side. So to the extent that you have new projects that come forward, to the extent that existing assessed values increase, that'll only be helpful from a cash flow standpoint from the city. A couple of the concepts in here, I won't go into great detail here, but there's some things we can do cash flow-wise to kind of manage things over time, capital reserves that you've set up in the past and used successfully in the past. So some of those concepts are built in here. They may come in sort of handy as you think about the next phase of things, as we begin to refine things going forward. So as you flip over to page 27, a whole lot of lead-up here, and page 27 is a nice summary page, and we'll show you some of the details and graphically how we get to this stuff. But page 27, we wanted to give you one page as a takeaway of the impact of doing this roughly $23 million over the next five years. So case number one, the left-hand side, which again assumes that we go out and borrow all $23 million in FY '19. What we've shown here is that when you do that, if you take your eye to kind of the middle of that table, the total penny impact, that is an equivalent impact of about six cents on your real estate tax rate. So we tend to think about things, order magnitude-wise, five, six cents on your real estate tax rate, we get that entire $23 million done, if indeed we went out and did it all in FY ' '19, all in sort of one fell swoop. From a ratio standpoint, you see at the bottom of the page, we'd end up at 9.21% in terms of debt service to expenditures, so it's below that 10% level. Debt to assessed value, we'd be at about 2.8% relative to the 3% level, so we'd be sort of below both of those policies. So again, we picked that $23 million number, not to say it's specific to any one thing or things, but it's a level that order magnitude-wise, as we sit here today, would keep you within compliance with those policies and give you a little bit of cushion, so we're not kind of running right up to the red line, so to speak. Now, it's interesting, if you take your eye to the right and look at that case number two, if we were to space the financing out a little bit, take a little more of a tact whereby we're borrowing the dollars as we need it as opposed to borrowing them all upfront, you notice that total penny impact comes down below five pennies, so roughly four and a half cents. And the debt service to expenditures, the peak of it is at 8.3%. Debt to assessed value, the peak of it is 2.5%. So there's certainly some things we can do by virtue of sort of strategically timing when the dollars are borrowed and how they're borrowed that really fairly, relatively substantially eat into the impact, both budgetarily and the capacity side of things. So again- So again, this is sort of our summary page, and then we'll take you through some other details. Obviously, let you sleep on it, think about it, pass any questions or feedback that you have back to the city manager to us. But that, roughly speaking, for that twenty-three million dollars is what we'll be looking at, somewhere in, call it four to six cents, the equivalent thereof on the real estate tax rate. And so that doesn't mean it all has to come from the real estate tax rate. Things like meals tax, things like sales tax, as your economy grows and expands, as you get new economic development projects in here, that just takes pressure off of sort of relying solely on that real estate tax rate. So in summary, that's where you end up, and we'll show you graphically what that means here on the next couple pages. So as you go to page twenty-nine, page twenty-nine is really showing, and again, this is the case one, where you go borrow the dollars upfront. Look at the graph on the left-hand side. Dark green bars are what we have on the books right now. Light green bars are how we might layer in roughly that amount over the next twenty years. What that allows us to do, if you take your eye to the far right-hand column, is keep that payout ratio in compliance with your policy in that fifty, sixty percent range, and keep the payments relatively sort of smooth over time. Anytime we're going through an exercise like this, it's a little bit of a balancing act between not wanting to overburden today's generation for projects that will likely be here for multi-decades, balancing that with not wanting to overburden future generations with projects that, you know, maybe their useful life has lived out by the time they get to them. So what we're thinking about to start with here is twenty-year loan, but using those financial policies and those metrics and watching those very closely to make sure we balance that within what is typically viewed as a reasonable and responsible way of doing that. So if you flip the page to page thirty, page thirty is the page where we talk about the debt affordability side of things. This is truly cash flow, looking at the budget, assuming for the moment that the only source of new revenue we had was the real estate tax rate. What would the impact be if indeed, again, we went and did this whole twenty-three million dollars? So what you see in the table here is we're simply starting with column A, which is what you have on the books now. We're adding to that column B, which is what that new financing could look like. That gets you to column C, which is simply the sum of what you have on the books now plus the projected new or sort of proposed new projects. We then do is compare that to column D, which is what you've got in the budget right now as we sit here for twenty-eighteen for debt service. And any difference thereof, which shows up in column E, is where really where we're getting to, how many dollars would it take on the real estate tax equivalent? Again, not that it has to all come from the real estate tax rate, but how many sort of dollars would it take to make that twenty-three million dollars happen? And so what you really see, if you're looking at column C, is you have about two point nine million dollars in debt service right now, meaning FY twenty-eighteen. That goes over a couple of years to about three point nine million to support the twenty-three million dollars in projects. That roughly million dollars equates to roughly about six pennies of real estate tax rate. If you flip the page, I don't spend a whole lot of time on this page right now, but I mentioned at the outset, there's some things we can do with some capital reserves and other ways of kind of structuring and timing the cash flows to help sort of build into the debt service budget as opposed to hitting you all more so than need be. And all page thirty-one is doing is showing you how that might work, and something you've used in the past. Okay, so as we go to page thirty-two, we'll show you, and hopefully the graph on the top-left page looks similar, as we talked with, you know, sort of the prior section, because what we're really doing here is layering in, again, existing plus our proposed new twenty-three million, comparing that to our policy, which is that red line there. And so what you see is we end up in the nine point two percent range there for a couple of years, but then it does trend down. And so by the time you get out to FY twenty-twenty-five, you're basically back down at eight percent, which is just a smidge higher than where you stand right now. So it's sort of a matter of timing those cash flows, managing those cash flows over time, putting you in a position whereby you've got flexibility annually in the budget, but again, not pushing things out too far so as to be irresponsible. You go to page thirty-three, and you can see what you'd look like relative to your peer And so again, I think what's interesting here is if you compare, so take a look at the bottom of the page, you get Pecosin, FY nineteen, which is the highest you would be in around that nine-plus percent range. If you look at the national medians, they're right in around that nine percent range, too. So we wouldn't necessarily be outside of the realm of what would be sort of reasonable and responsible from a national sort of perspective. Page thirty-four, you see debt to assessed value. Again, similar kind of picture here. We've tried to err on the conservative side when we think about future assessed value growth, just basically taking your billion-five-plus existing tax base or assessed value, assuming it grows at just one percent a year, which on average, hopefully, you're going to see a whole lot better than that. We don't want to count on a whole lot more than that. And you can see there, you get up roughly in the two point eight percent range, but then tail off very quickly, and that's because you're making those principal payments annually and sort of paying things off in a responsible and reasonable manner. But you see what the impact there is. At twenty-three million, that'd really be a majority of the capacity you have from a ratio standpoint. Page thirty-six is going to show you the same things a couple pages prior. Again, just a trend over time. If we're right now in the one and a half percent range, we get up in the two point eight percent range, looking at the bottom of the page, and then we come back down. I think importantly, this is the worst-case scenario whereby we take all twenty-three million, we do it next year. I'm going to go very quickly through the second scenario here, and this is going to look even a little bit better, whereby we take this in pieces. So if you do that and you go to page thirty-eight, what page thirty-eight is basically saying is if we took that same twenty-three million, we took it in pieces instead of all at once. You see on that graph on the left-hand side, it's a more gradual sort of slope. So we're going up at a little bit slower pace, likely at a pace that is more in line with when you'd actually need the money for the projects, what we call just-in-time funding. We still keep in the sixty-plus percent payout ratio range. And importantly, our peak debt service ends up being a little bit less than that prior page, just because we're able to, by virtue of timing things, take advantage of some of that future decline you've got in your existing debt service as we wrap in with your sort of new debt service. If you flip the page over to thirty-nine, I think they'll be more apparent. Again, similar concept to what we're doing a couple pages ago, but by virtue of being able to sort of time things and not take all of the twenty-three million all at once, we're able to basically limit the impact to your budget. So instead of six pennies in the prior case, we're down at four and a half pennies for this case. And I think if you want to think about that on a home value, on a, say, every two-hundred thousand dollars a home value, that six pennies is going to be about, in the prior case, six pennies would be about a hundred and twenty dollars a year. So about ten dollars a month is what that six pennies equates to. The four and a half pennies is even less than that when you think about sort of the impact to your typical residential bill, just to give you a sense in sort of order of magnitude. So again, debt service-wise, instead of ending up at three point nine million, we're able to kind of ramp up more slowly to about three point eight, and then sort of head back down the hill, allows us to keep that roughly six pennies down at four and a half pennies as we think about the projection going forward. I'll take you, Griffin, if you want to go over to page forty-one. Another advantage of that strategy of taking pieces as we need them, debt service to expenditures, instead of ramping up to what is almost nine and a half percent, we really are able to keep that ratio closer to eight percent. And so as we talked about, that particular ratio is very important. Gives you a little more flexibility annually in the budget. That's going to be important from a rating agency standpoint. So that's probably one major difference aside from the penny impact in terms of taking the debt in pieces as opposed to one big chunk. So you see that graphically on page forty-one, similar in forty-two. You kind of end up in line with the peer levels over time. Forty-three, again, a similar story in terms of debt versus assessed value, whereby you're able to ramp up a little bit lower, meaning at a slower pace, keep yourself at a lower sort of aggregate level, and in turn, keep those a little more cushion relative to your rating policy, excuse me, your financial policy. So again, page forty-four, I think you're going to see a similar theme here whereby if you were to do the entire amount here in pieces, you're going to be able to keep things from a rating standpoint in around a range. It's going to be in compliance with your policies. It's going to be viewed as being responsible from the rating agency standpoint. So we give you all that as a lot of background, I realize. So that really is what we have. Mr. Mayor, I've probably said a lot and given you a lot of numbers, a lot of things to think about all at once. Happy to answer any questions you have right now, or?
Well, let me thank Kyle, you and Griffin for coming down. Let me tell you that I really appreciate the detail in which you went through, recognizing that, you know, we've got some new members here. Where are we? I don't think it was too much to go into all the detail that you did, and I really appreciate it because even I learn something new every time I listen to it. So really appreciate that. You've given us a lot to think about, and, you know, there's a couple of things, I guess, that I want to reemphasize and make sure that I understand them correctly.
Yep.
In your case two analysis, we talk about staying further away from our financial policy limits, being the three percent and the ten percent. What that also does is gives us a buffer for an emergency or something we didn't foresee. So something else to think about, it not only does it do what we want, but it also doesn't eat up our whole credit card, so to speak.
That's right.
The second thing that I wanted to emphasize here is that in both of your scenarios, you show taking on the debt by increasing the tax rate first. And I think that's a key point for us to understand, that if we go down this road, and that's just so everybody knows, that's a key signal to the bond rating agencies that we know what we're getting into, not just in time financing, but understanding that we know what the cost of this is over time, and it's also a big signal that we need to pay attention to. In other words, you don't bite this off a penny a year. You basically send the signal to protect your ratings so that as we go up to shop these bonds, that everybody knows that, hey, they're already paid for, you know? And that's a big point. So I just wanted to point out those two things. I think I got those right.
You're right.
Okay?
Very much so.
But any other questions while we have these guys here? And let me say a word to those that may be joining us from home, and I know we're running a little bit late in getting into our normal meeting, but this is something we are going to continue this work session as long as there are questions. So I'm not going to rush through this, and counsel, now's your time.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The difference between case one and case two, there's a significant difference in the total debt versus assessed value percentage, where one is three percent and the other one is down to two and a half. And if I understand that correctly, that was taking the same amount of money, same amount of new debt.
That's correct.
But over a two-year period, getting part of it in like in nineteen and the other part in twenty-one, is that?
That's correct, yeah, because what's happening underneath that is you're continuing to pay principal on your existing debt on the books right now.
Okay, so, but it's that much difference doing it over a two-year period versus a single lump sum?
It is. Yes, sir.
And would that change dramatically if you took it over a four-year period?
It could. It could. I think from a debt service to expenditures standpoint, which is probably the more important of the two, it won't make quite as much of a difference, but from a debt to assessed value, it could make a more substantial difference there. Because what's happening is you're paying principal annually every year, and you pay your existing debt off pretty quickly, so that existing principal does decline. So from a debt to assessed value standpoint, it might make a difference, but really what's probably more important is that debt service to expenditures side of things. That's really the critical ratio. It probably makes less of a difference there.
And staying under the three percent ratio, okay, that affects the bond rating a little or moderate?
It's going to be viewed, I mean, it's going to be important because it's one of your policies, and some of the first things they look at is, do you have policies and are you following them? And secondly, it's one of the ratios they look at. So of all the things we've talked about, it is probably less important than debt service to expenditures, but it probably is a close second in terms of the debt side of things.
Yeah, I asked that question because I know part of the reason that we're doing it as well as we are today is because we did get a triple-A bond rating, and we got low interest ratings as a result of that. And so should that bond rating change, then our ability to get the lower interest rates may also change.
That's right. That's right. And, yeah, and critical underpinning of anything we're doing here is making sure that we're going to keep our overall sort of financial standing within the same level you are right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Counselor Mcgregor?
Kyle, is it a, would it be a straight-line variation, let's say, instead of eleven and a half and eleven and a half, we went fifteen, we had to have fifteen in the first part of it and then eight in the second? Is it a straight-line variation between that six and four and a half?
It's probably not a, it is probably not a straight line when we think about the cash flow, meaning the debt service to expenditures side of things. There's a little more ability to kind of massage with that side of things. On the debt to assessed value side of things, it is a more one-to-one, if that's the question, so to speak. So in terms of, if you said, all right, we need to do fifteen million upfront and a little bit less, you're going to be within the same general range as you're seeing here. bit less, you're going to be within the same general range as you're seeing here. You know, it may not be the exact one-to-one, kind of depending upon the timing of when the payments hit.
All right, other questions? Randy, anything from your perspective?
I just want to thank Kyle and Griffin and David. We have been working on this, and Tanya, and Teresa, when she was here. We've been working on this for about five months. And we can model essentially any reasonable amount of variations to the assumptions. We picked one in presenting $23 million because it's the one that got closest without going uncomfortably close to staying the most, staying within our policies. As you move forward and as you make decisions, if you decide to do nothing, this is a useful exercise statistically, if you decide to do half, we can model that for you. In part, in response to Mr. Southall's question about sort of breaking something over four years, when you make decisions on what you want to do, let's say it's a brand-new school. Well, it takes much longer to build a brand-new school than it does to rehab the lights at municipal parks. So, part of that drawdown schedule will be based on the type of project it is. You know, on a large municipal building, you're going to have an A&E phase, which is going to be much less expensive than the construction phase. So, as we know more what you may wish to do, we'll build those in and we'll tighten this up. So, as you get further into your progress, we'll be coming back with pieces periodically to match where you are, so that we always know where we're going to be as it relates to these ratios.
Very good. So as always, basically stepping through this, we met with the school board, talking about what they may or may not do. We're evaluating our options as far as ability to pay. This is step one of that. So, again, I appreciate what Davenport has done for us. Thank you, Kyle, and gives us a lot of food for thought. The next thing that council will entertain is the breadth of what's in our capital improvements plan today. What are our priorities? That's the next most vital conversation to allow us to set up models, as the city manager and Kyle have been talking about, for, you know, exactly how do you model it? But this has been a great brief, lets us know where we are, what we should be watching, doesn't take into account any future growth. I think you're on the conservative side of things. So, you know, I really appreciate the hard work and the information that we've gained from this. So, thanks very much. I know that we're going to see a quick article or basically an extension of the contract with Davenport in the regular meeting. I hope you all are going to stick around just for a few minutes. We'll get to that as quickly as possible.
Happy to. Sorry we took so much time, by the way.
No, that's okay. No, you took just the right amount of time, which was what we wanted to hear. So thank you very much. Very vital to us. I'm going to take a five-minute break. We're going to stay on the air, but we're going to mute, and then we're going to come back and do the regular meeting.
Okay.
So we're going to pause right here, or actually close the work session, and I'll come back and open the meeting. Thanks.